Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, March 27, 2017, to order. All members of this board are present. At this time, I'd kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 38, 38A, 39, 39A. Questions, comments, or a motion, please?
Move those warrants as indicated.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, which we do not have any minutes to approve. So we'll move right into our next appointment. We're about three minutes or so off schedule. It is our seven o'clock appointment with Karen Campbell, who was our recreation director, and it is with regards to a program, program updates in general, and the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility Open House. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here to speak with you for a few moments on recreation. In the recreation world, it's spring, so I know it doesn't feel like it out there. We are moving fast and forward into the season. We have the Easter egg hunt coming up, April 15th, our annual hunt, as you know. So this Wednesday, we've got egg fillers coming to Town Hall. We have about 25 people that are registered to, mostly through the senior center, that will be filling 7,000 eggs for the annual event, which will be two o'clock on the 15th. It's also time for baseball. T-ball is revving up, and we are having stellar turnout for registration for the first time in several years. All of a sudden, we have 163 children and 14 teams set up to play T-ball this season. Last year, we had 135. It had been kind of standard number, and 12 teams. And all of a sudden, I think, partially because we have a Facebook page now, so we can get the word out a little bit more and a little bit, targeting some of those parents of the younger children. Yentile Farm is slated to open up, as you all know, and I guess the construction fencing came down just today, except for at the front gate. We have issued several permits now for the spring, mostly to youth lacrosse and youth soccer. So I think these are the groups that you had anticipated would be out there, and they're looking forward to DPW declaring the field turf, the field snow-free. Hasn't happened yet. The open house for the Yentile facility is scheduled to be held on Saturday, May 13th. We've got a slate of activities. The events will start at 10 o'clock with ribbon cutting and continue on. We have several local organizations that have been very generous and volunteered and donated. We have, the Rotary Club has donated hot dog lunches for people that come. Sons of Italy are donating novelty ice cream treats for the afternoon. The Wilmington Community Fund has donated the payment to have the DJ there. So we'll have a DJ all afternoon. We'll have several different activities going on. We've got, our flag football vendor will be hosting activities out on the turf field, so everybody who wants to, who has appropriate footwear, can get out there and actually play a little bit, no matter what age. We'll have our Tiny Tots and Kids Club staff out on the event lawn, and they'll be hosting some activities. And we have some rec basketball supervisors that will be having some fun basketball games and mini-games going on on the basketball court. So it should be a great day. Also, this spring, and I believe that many of you have seen our spring newsletter, but we have a lot of new programs going on that is, in addition to the tried and true, we are trying archery for the first time. We start this week. It's indoors, believe it or not, with big nets. So they say safety first, and we're looking forward to seeing how that works. We've got Star Wars Lego and Disney cupcake decorating classes. We've got floral arranging classes for the adults, a hula-hooping class that they assure me that even I could make this hula hoop go around, so I'm gonna tell, I'll believe it when I see it. We have a trip to go see Adam Trent, who has been just picked up by a major agency, and our group is going to be able to see this illusionist. So they kind of read people's minds, very entertaining, have lunch. That's happening in April. And we also have a trip this June to St. Andrews by the Sea, up in New Brunswick, Canada. Also includes a must safari in Sunday River and Campobello Island, where FDR had his summer home. So looking forward to that as another, another spring getaway. Spring is always full of time for preparation for the summer activities for us, so we're very busy gearing up for our Tiny Tots and Kids Club program. We usually have over 200 children in that program every summer, ages four to eight, our playground program. We have up to 285 children in that program every summer, so we're getting ready for that. And we also have a lot of other things. We have a myriad of tennis programs. We have Learn to Sail, things like that. So all of that prep happens now, so we're busy in the office. We're also getting ready for the beach, which opens June 10th this year, and we'll have similar rules and regulations to the past two years, where we've tightened things up and things have been going very well down there. So looking to do more of the same. The only other thing that I'd like to just bring to your attention is that we're continuing with our online registration system, and it has been invaluable. I think that has helped us to be able to maintain the activity level that we have. It has taken care of some of the more menial jobs. We used to hand-type and hand-write a lot of things, and now that's all done through the system. We are seeing approximately 75 percent of our payments that we receive are by credit and debit card, so that's clearly a very well-received feature by our residents, that they can pay that way. Our transactions, we just, I'm able to compare over the first three months of last year through today, fortunately being through March 31st anyway. We're up about 6 percent over last year, so we're seeing our numbers of transactions increasing. And we have a component in there that allows us to send out messages, which help us to transmit important information if there's a class cancellation, for example, but also we can target people by age or by interest and do marketing messages. So along with the Facebook page, I think that's helping us get word out on our programming. So if you have any questions at all, that's what spring looks like in our office.
Thank you very much for that very comprehensive update. I'll jump out in front, if my colleagues don't mind, just to extend a warm welcome to you here this evening. I believe this may be your first official update to us as our new recreation director, and I just wanted to compliment you publicly just how well you've embraced your new role as a leader. You certainly are no stranger to the recreation department, and it's clear, the dedicated membership that you've had as a member on the staff for a number of years with Deb and with the other members of your team. I do know that you have new hire in there as well. In my opinion, I've just witnessed how you have taken the department that's already been an exceptional department to a new level. You talked about some of the technical enhancements, some of the programmatic changes, while keeping more of the same and adding some of the additional services that you just spoke about. In addition, just as a member of the Yentile Farm Development Committee, I know Kevin is to my right. I can't thank you enough as to how positive and friendly and inviting you've been in terms of incorporating Yentile into your day-to-day. I certainly recognize, as one member of the committee, that bringing that field space and facility into our inventory as a town certainly has added to your workload as a team, and I appreciate your willingness and can-do attitude to take that into your day-to-day life and embrace that new change. And also, too, taking on the open house and making it a community event for everyone to enjoy. Certainly, it's not an easy task. We didn't give you a lot of time to plan, and certainly with the site constraints relative to parking and the number of people that would want to attend, I think your vision of doing an open house is appropriate, so people can come and go as they please and pass through the space and get some enjoyment out of it, but they don't necessarily need to feel obligated to stay the whole day. Not that they're not welcome, but it certainly was designed to make it user-friendly and appealing to residents. So just overall, I can't say enough, 7,000 eggs. I mean, that's quite impressive, and just a myriad of other things that you're doing. So I don't want to elongate my comments, but I just wanted to be thorough in thanking you very, very much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
So I'll open it up to my colleagues. Anyone wants to say anything, I'll start over to my right with Selvin Bendel.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for being here. And again, I'll echo my colleagues' comments. We appreciate all you're doing. You're doing a wonderful job, obviously, and not to anyone's surprise, certainly. And I hope that residents will take advantage of the awesome opportunities you laid out for the spring. I love talking spring. I wish we could continue to talk spring, and hopefully, there'll be no more winter talk. So it's delightful to have you here, and certainly looking forward to several of those events for my family, and I hope residents will take advantage of them. And I wish you nothing but good weather for all these events upcoming.
Thank you. That would be helpful, if you could all work that into the system, would be great.
So thank you to you and your staff. Thank you.
Karen, thank you for being here tonight, and I commend you and your staff and your volunteers for everything that you do. The programs sound great. The cupcake-making program may sound good on my end, rather than the hula hoop thing on my part, but I'm looking forward to the Yentile Farm opening. You've done a great job in organizing that and getting it together, and should be quite an event, and I'm hoping the whole community comes out.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you just said, well, you do a great job, and I just can honestly say that I think Jeff did a great job selecting you as the Director of the Rec Department. You also have fantastic people that work under you, and I'm looking forward to it, really am, and it's been all said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. This is great. So congratulations, I guess. I've already said it, but I'll say it again publicly. Your high energy and just your positive attitude, your smile, is infectious, and I hope that the residents who are watching here tonight or watching a rebroadcast will take advantage of the breadth and the variety of the programs that you and your team are putting out there. Historically, we've always had a number of different programs and programs for the youngest of our, of our community to the oldest of our community, so I really compliment you on that and being inclusive to the entire, all of the residents. One question I did have was, oh, no, just the last comment before the question is, I just wanted to compliment you and the team for the modernization of the programs, and really, I think that the leveraging and the use of the technology, which is creating efficiencies for us, the residents, to be able to really get easier access to these programs, which certainly is translating to an increase in the usage of them. So that's great, and congratulations, and thank you for doing that. The question, I guess, was kind of related to weather. May 13th, May is a risky time of the year. Is there a plan in motion, if, God forbid, there's an exceptional amount of moisture on that day?
We're gonna be out there.
Really?
I'm broke.
Exactly. So, yes, this is why I'm trying to get everybody with any power at all to please come together and do a rain dance or something, but, yeah, we really have no backup time. It's a really tough time of year where we have so many people that are orchestrated and people are volunteering and doing things, and to take up two of their weekend days in May is something that couldn't really work out well. So we're kind of all in for May 13th and gonna do the best we can. If it's horrendous, then we'll do it quickly.
I have high confidence it's gonna be a beautiful day.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Is it too late to add the dome that was in the plan? Thank you again. Appreciate it. So moving on to our next appointment, which is 7:15, which is a discussion regarding the interim chairman to serve prior to the board's reorganization. I'm gonna take a best effort to try and articulate this out to the board, what the purpose of this discussion topic is. As you all know, my last meeting will be the next meeting, which is Monday, April 10th. We do have town election on April 22nd, which is that Saturday, and I will officially be no longer in this capacity as a member of the board and also as chair. The next meeting for the Board of Selectmen is immediately following on that Monday, April 24th, which in essence, this chair seat will be vacant. And then we have town meeting, which is Saturday, April 29th. And then the Board of Selectmen meets again on Monday, on May 8th, and that typically is when this board typically reorganizes. So as a result of that, in summary, you essentially would not have a chairman for your meeting on Monday, April 24th, and you would not, in essence, have a chairman for your town meeting on April 29th. So as has been past practice, not necessarily a legal policy or anything of this board, in the past, it has typically deferred back to the prior chair, in which case would be Selectman Michael Shampoo. So I thought, in fairness, since I'm no longer going to be here, that we would bring it up as a board discussion to talk about what the pleasure of the board is to handle that situation. What I'd like to, and I believe that Selectman Shampoo would be okay with me sharing this information, is that on town meeting on that day, Selectman Shampoo's son is making his confirmation.
Yes.
And he is going to have to leave town meeting for a period of time, and as a result of that, will not be able to fully participate in that day, understandably so. In my opinion, family comes first, and it's certainly a major milestone in the lives of his family, specifically for his son. Town meeting prep is on Wednesday, April 5th, which I am planning to attend, because I still will be the chair of this board, and I would have suggested to have Selectman Shampoo join me, which he was going to do prior to being made of this, aware of the schedule conflict. So I think I've conveyed all the dates that are in question. You could decide as a board to defer back to the prior chair for the meeting engagements that I talked about, and then perhaps consider a prior chair, which in this case would defer back to me for the year prior, which is not an option. The year prior to that was Selectman McCoy, to potentially do the town meeting portion. So I just want to throw that out there for discussion, and Jeff, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add, but that's the scope of the situation.
No, I think that pretty well summarizes it.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just shed a little light, I've been on the board for a few years, and it's always been the past practice, as you stated, while you're sitting chairperson, whoever it is, if you were out for any reason, being sick, the normal process was, would be the former chairman of the previous year would sit in that position. However, in the past history of the board, it has happened where you're not gonna be on the board after the election, okay? So therefore, this seat is vacant, is what we're discussing. And normally, and whatever the pleasure of the board is, normally, it went to the most senior guy serving on the board that would take you through up until the following meeting, which would be the reorganization at the end of appointments. I just put that out there, you know? I just, you know, like I said, I'm not surprised, surprised to see the agenda item, but I understand, you know, your concern. So I just thought I'd just mention that to you folks. That's how it's always been, and it's happened that way before.
Yeah, I don't know how it's always been or hasn't been, but it would make, yeah, it would make sense, the election's the 22nd, the 24th is our first meeting after that, that's when we would appoint the new chairman. You'd have five people here, and that's when you would have it, on the 24th. And then the 29th is the town meeting. I don't see it to be any simpler than that. Your election's the 22nd, meetings are 24th, you have five selectmen, and those individuals will elect the chair.
Just a little history. No, what I said has always been the record, but I will say one time, go back about, I don't know, about 14, 15 years ago, something like that did happen. I was the chair, and they gave me the boot, and they put the new person on, I'm saying as prior to the town meeting. But, and that happened to me one other time, but that's fine. I'm just telling you, that's how it's always been. But whatever the pleasure of the board, that's fine. We're gonna have five new members, I mean, a new member after the election, and whatever the board does, you know, I'm happy, whatever they decide to do. Just gave a little history. That's all I wanted to say.
I just have one question, Madam Chair, if I can, perhaps for the manager. I'm not sure if this Article Number 1 at town meeting will have anything. Do we have to have the townspeople vote to certify Article Number 1 before we can vote to reorg?
Article 1 being the elections.
Would be certifying the elections. Does that have any impact on what we?
No. No. So I think the, and I don't quite honestly know what the rationale was, but my understanding that historically, the vote has, the board has reorganized on the first meeting in May as to whether there's any problem with doing that following the election in April. I don't see that there's any legal issue. I don't know, Beverly, do you recall if there was, what the rationale was for the first?
It results from when the election used to be the fourth Saturday, or you say the last Saturday. Then they changed the elections.
Right. So the election was formally the last Saturday of April, so that's probably what, why it was done that way. But certainly, at that point, you'll have a full board, so there's no legal hurdle in terms of doing it the April 24th.
I think what you conveyed, I mean, I'm still empowered at this moment to share my opinion on this. I'm a short timer, but your point is well-taken. It leaves it to the five members of the board to have a vote, and you, there's really no reason to wait in establishing who your new chair is, if that's, you know, I think Selectman McCoy's historical knowledge is meaningful and should be heard, but why delay a decision and put a new chair in place as soon as possible so that you can resume full operations, as far as I'm concerned? So I would be in favor of, while I can have a say, is for you to do it on the 24th.
I guess the only other question or comment would be the meeting, the town meeting, if the, if the intent is to have someone at the prep meeting who is expected to be the chair, you know, that prep meeting was noted is on the 5th. You know, it's probably not essential to have whoever the chair will be that's selected on the 24th. It may be helpful just so that they have an understanding of the process that will take place on the 29th.
Yeah, I would think if there's some issue on the 5th, that the new chairman would need to know that you would advise them, the town manager would advise them, because you'd have that time between the 24th and the 29th.
Right. Yeah.
There shouldn't be an issue, I don't think, with that.
And I, I mean, I'm attending that meeting on the 5th. I mean, I'm still in that capacity, so I intend it ongoing, but even if you decided not to go in the direction of doing it on the 24th, whoever would be joining me for that meeting would essentially be covering as not the official chair in that capacity anyway, because it hasn't been decided. So I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't see this as an issue.
Yeah, I think the 24th would make sense, to me, anyway.
I think, just in the interest of continuity, that someone, one of the, I guess, four of us ought to accompany Judy to that prep meeting, and we can decide who it is, and if it's Mr. McCoy out of seniority or something, because as it was articulated, we don't know who the chair will be until the 24th. But I think we ought to have, because Judy won't be there for the town meeting, so we ought to have at least one of us be represented. Was that was already said, you know, am I echoing what the sentiment was already?
Yeah, I would say that it's not, it perhaps may be helpful, it's not essential, because as Selectman Kyra noted, you know, whoever ultimately becomes the chair on the 24th, I can certainly meet with them between the 24th and the 29th and provide them with any key information that they may need in the lead-up to the town meeting.
I have no objection. That's fine. And the schedule doesn't, I can't think of any reason not to follow that schedule either, so that certainly makes sense to me, too. The issue, I guess I'd want to have some agreement here among us. We opened the 24th, I'm sorry, what's the meeting where we reorganized? Yeah, the 24th, right? We would open that meeting and reorganize right away, but who would really kind of just start that process?
I would think that the former chairman would do that, the last chair.
That has his, that's.
If you're talking about how would people be situated in the various positions, I would think the last chair would.
For a few moments, until we actually identify who that chairperson, the permanent chairperson is. And that had been historically, at least in my nine years here, eight years here, it has been the most recent previous chair, when that person's available. So unless that's not the pleasure of the board, let's say.
If I could say, Judy's done a good job. I don't think anybody needs to assist her at the next meeting when she has to go to chair it. And if that's the pleasure of the board, and blame me, I am fine if Mr. Shampoo is gonna be the interim chairman, it's fine, but I just shed a little light of 27 years, that's always been the history. Whoever's the most senior person would bring you through the next meeting, after-town meeting, at the end of appointments, that's when you had reorganization. But, Mr. Kyra, if you, no, that's fine. I want to work with everybody. I want to work with everybody.
It's a 10-minute assignment.
Either one of you two can sit in that chair for just the opening portion until a new chairman is appointed, so.
Yeah, it's a 10-minute assignment, so I defer.
I'm fine.
So you guys can, I can work it out.
I feel very comfortable with either option, the 10 minutes.
Yeah, I'm fine either. Mr. Shampoo, that's fine. No, no, it's fine. Mr. Shampoo, that's fine. You can.
All right, so based on consensus, why don't we, what I'm hearing here is that Mr. Shampoo will start the meeting of the 24th, and you will reorg then, and I will plan to go to the prep meeting on the 5th, as planned, which is from 4 to 7. And then Jeff will meet with the new chair in some capacity after the 24th, between the 24th and the 29th.
Madam Chair, you said that so eloquently. I'll make a motion where you just.
Make a motion, maybe I have a second. Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate the board honoring that discussion, just in light of me vacating. We wanted to just have a transparent and open discussion so everybody knew what was happening with the board. Okay? Thank you. Communications, please.
First on the docket is some correspondence between EPA, James DiLorenzo, and Olin. It's actually three different letters. I'll just address each of them in summary. The first one is from February 24th to Olin, references a October 18th, 2016, meeting that was held between EPA and Olin, that suggests that due to delays in the operating, so-called Operating Unit 3, or OU3, which is a groundwater remedial investigation, and the prospect of future delays in terms of gathering information there, EPA wishes to move forward with the feasibility study with regard to Operating Unit 1, or OU1, which is the onsite Olin property contamination, and the Operating Unit 2, so-called, or OFF property, sediment and surface water contamination, and then also portions of OU3, the dense aqueous liquid that has been identified there. This work would, the intent would be to work towards a record of decision for operating units 1 and 2, and an interim record of decision for operating unit 3. Olin agrees to move forward with alternative evaluations on the Jewel Drive property, which is one area where there's some dense aqueous materials that have been identified, but they object to the requirements that EPA has established for the Main Street Dapple and then another Dapple pool that's identified near Maple Meadow Brook. And then there's a second letter. This is from Olin to the EPA, where they assert certain rights that are contained in the administrative settlement agreement between Olin and EPA, and they're seeking to invoke the dispute resolution procedures in the agreement, essentially is, they are objecting to going forward with portions of this evaluation at this time. Then there's a third letter from EPA back to Olin that, this letter is dated March 21st. Letter from EPA to Olin acknowledges, Olin's letter indicates that there's a 14-day negotiating period, which would have been expired on March 24th, but they extend the negotiating period through April 21st. Olin has until March 31st to submit written comments as to the basis for their objections, and the negotiations with EPA will, they're looking for dates to meet with Olin prior to April 21st. EPA also notes in their response to Olin the distinction between their request for seeking early action on the Dapple. In fact, they're seeking a earlier evaluation of the alternatives that may be. In fact, they're seeking a earlier evaluation of the alternatives that may be available to dealing with the Dapple. So that's just, there's clearly going to be ongoing discussions between EPA and Olin as to how to move forward on the remediation.
So Jeff, if I may, I know that we had talked about this when we were planning the agenda, but I wanted to ask you a question, and I don't mean to spot you with this, and I don't expect that you would have a comprehensive answer right now. But in thinking about this, obviously this is disturbing to see that there's going to be, you know, some disputing back and forth, and delaying the remediation, if you will, while they're trying to figure this out. How does it work in terms of these types of correspondence? All of these, you know, obviously were not copied, STB was not copied. So they're evaluating, you know, New England Trans Rail. So how is the process of communication to see the documents like this get to STB? So they're aware of what's happening separate from that particular application? So you have two things totally happening side by side, and not assuming that any of these agencies at the federal level are talking to each other?
Right.
So how do we, as a town, help bridge that communication gap, if that's even our role? And to what extent is our Boston law team integrated into this such that they're advocating on our behalf with documents like this, such that STB is aware that the site is being handled in this manner? Does that make sense?
Well, so, these documents, I don't believe are directly going to be sent to the STB. I think what will happen is, as we make comments going forward to the STB, there may be a point where it's appropriate to reference them. But from STB's standpoint, they're not specifically focused on the EPA site remediation as much as they are whether the New England Trans Rail's proposal meets their criteria. Clearly, one of the major issues that we are, have raised and will continue to raise is the inappropriateness of the NET gaining the ability to reactivate an active superfund site. And that's, that's one of the underlying elements of our comments to them. You know, we haven't, or EPA and Olin has not fully characterized the site, nor have they identified the options for solving the problem. And that will continue to be, you know, part of our case. So these documents, I guess the short answer is that these documents will be incorporated into future comments, but they won't specifically be sent off to STB because they would not really have a particular impact at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
How about, can I just add to that, because that was one of the questions I had? How about our congressional delegation, who seem to be very focused on it? And should they get a copy of this?
Yes, yeah, they will...
Because I didn't see them copied on, on anything, but...
Right. The information will be shared with our congressional delegation, just to keep them up to date on what's happening in terms of the specific Olin issue.
If I could, Madam Chair, just add one thing to this. I recently had the opportunity to sit down with Representative Congressman Moulton's office and some of his folks, and that's just one of the things that we talked about, is the town's opposition to this project. And they pointed out just what Selectman Kyra had just suggested, that we ought to keep them in the loop on anything that transpires, and so I appreciate you bringing that up. And I believe it's Kate Burnham?
Kate Machet.
Kate Machet, excuse me. And she's the one, she's the point person, she seems, she's been very receptive so far. They were receptive to what we had to say on that day, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And I, you know, I would, I would suggest that anything going forward, we should have forwarded to them, and hopefully they'll be the ones going to battle for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see, next under correspondence is a letter from Jane Handy, from the Department of Revenue. This correspondence comes out typically this time of the year. The Department of Revenue certifies as of July 1, 2016, that Shawshin Tech's excess and deficiency balance is $1,334,371. Essentially, that is their equivalent to the free cash or available funds that regional vocational schools have. Next under correspondence is a memo from me to the board, just a brief status on the Restucha rink. Unfortunately, there is not a whole lot to report at this point. There really have not been any opportunities to resolve the current legal issue. It remains within the, slated to go to court, and the parties, to this point, have not expressed any interest in settling the matter. So it's proceeding on its regular legal track, if you will. Early on, the projection or prospect was suggested that the, if this runs its normal course through the court, that a decision could be made sometime around the time that the lease expires, which is August of 2018. Obviously, that's somewhat speculative, it all depends upon how quickly, you know, the judge hears the case and makes a decision. But that's really all we can report at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. As you can see, fellow board members, that I had asked Jeff to send a memo out just with an update, especially in light of it being hockey season and tryouts, and we had, we have a Warren article for the revolving account placeholder, and it's kind of brought some public discussion out there. So we wanted to suggest that we get some information out there. We also have, you know, two state championship teams that are coming in here, you know, that had some rink discussions with people during attending some of that and asking for an update. So I wanted to just let this board and the public know where the town stands. As you all know, we had the special town meeting, the Board of Selectmen had decided to proceed with that, the funding was granted. Obviously, it's not prudent to be discussing any sort of litigation or strategies in public session, but I would just offer to my colleagues in my recent soon-to-be departure that you consider discussing this at any appropriate times as the manager deems necessary, an executive session as appropriate, so you can keep, keep moving forward with this if that's the board's desire to do so. So I just wanted to go on the record as offering those comments. Thank you.
Under Board to Consider, the first item is a request by the town clerk for the reappointment of election workers. There are 70 individuals here slated to be working during the local elections. It's a pleasure of the board for me to read each name, or do you want to just...
What is, what's past practice? Have you typically read them all into the record, Jeff? Or is it as presented as that?
I think it says presented, yeah, that's sufficient.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this request to appoint the election workers for 2017 as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next is a letter from the Veterans Agent, Lou Simagley. I'll just read it into the record. "I'm sending this letter on behalf of the Department of Veterans Services. We are requesting permission to have an annual Memorial Day parade and ceremony at the Wildwood Cemetery. The date of the parade this year is May 29, 2017. The parade will step off promptly at 10:00 from the Market Basket parking lot and will proceed down Main Street and down Middlesex Ave, ending at the Town Common. The ceremony will start promptly at 11:00 at the Veterans Lot in Wildwood Cemetery. Thank you for the Board of Selectmen's continued support for the Veterans of Wilmington."
Move to grant the request?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next is a request from the police chief for use of Rotary Park on August 1, 2017 for the National Night Out celebration. This will be the third year that the police department has done this now. Basically, since 1984, there's been a concerted effort to promote involvement in crime prevention activities, police community partnerships, and neighborhood involvement in Crime Watch. I would just note, as he explains here, "As we continue our tradition of celebrating the National Night Out events every August, our plan again this year is to celebrate the residents of Wilmington with dunk tanks, children's movie, and fun for all ages. We are planning to have a Touch a Truck exhibit and a K-9 demonstration, which are always a crowd pleaser. Refreshments will be offered by local businesses to residents who attend. Raffles and dunk tank are always a big hit, and proceed with a go-to, quote, "cops for the kids with cancer," end quote, generous charity that has assisted several Wilmington families who have children battling the disease. We also, will also provide crime prevention education and material which we are sure the residents of Wilmington will find helpful. This year's event will be made possible by support given by the Wilmington Police Department as we continue on our, actually, it's fourth year, through a generous grant from the Community Foundation, $100,000 for 100 grant, and other local business partners like the Poor Shun, Red Heat Tavern, Target, and Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. The generosity of our corporate sponsors is made possible through key partnerships, which assures we connect with the police department of Wilmington's neighborhoods, share crime prevention initiatives, and enhance neighborhood involvement, making Wilmington a safer community for all to enjoy."
Questions, comments, or a motion to grant this request?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we grant the Wilmington Police Department the request that they're seeking as described by the manager, National Night Out, August 1st.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next under Board to Consider is a taxi, taxicab license for Wilmington Taxi. And the recommendation of the police chief is in favor. As you know, we just have the one taxi cab service. It is, the operators are, is a Timothy J. Flynn. But this specific, there's actually two applications that will be before you this evening. One is for the taxicab company, the other is the individual operator. So this is for the, to authorize the license for Wilmington Taxi.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to grant the license as described by the manager?
I would move to grant the request of Timothy Flynn. The, is this for the owner's permit? Is this the one we're voting on at this time?
This is for the actual company, the Wilmington Taxi.
So, as you stated.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And then the next application is the renewal of the taxi cab operator's license for Timothy J. Flynn, again, the operator of Wilmington Taxi, and once again, the police chief recommends approval.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to, for the operator's license.
Second.
Flynn made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Then we have the common, actually, the Hawk and Pedal licenses. And there's three here, the board may choose to take them up separately, they all happen to be from the same family, first being Joseph Delock. This is Memzy Ice Cream. They have had a license for several years now, and the recommendation from both the police chief and the health director is approval. This one, again, is Joseph Delock, who is one of three that will be applying for Hawk and Pedal license.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the Hawk and Pedal license to sell ice cream to Joseph Delock of Memzy's Ice Cream?
Moved, as stated?
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Next is a, also a Hawk and Pedal license for Nicholas Delock, same enterprise.
Questions, comments, or a motion to grant Nicholas Delock his license?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And then the last one, please.
Last one is Stephen Delock, again, Memzy's Ice Cream Hawk and Pedal.
Okay, would anyone like to make motion to grant the license to Stephen Delock? As read by the manager.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Just pause for a second while we get caught up on some of the signatures here. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain public comments. Yes?
Kevin McDonald, 140 Yonkers Street, Wilmington. I'll try to keep my conference demands to the agenda tonight. With regard to the treasury mark, I'll get back to that in my latter comments, but with regard to the Olin site, one of the things that I'd like to point out is that Wilmington has a strong ally. It's actually a neighboring community that also has had people that have died of cancer. As you know, I stated before, and it's pretty well-known fact, that Wilmington is a community that has a high rate of cancer. Concerning the Olin site, I'm disappointed that there's an attack mode that's really not being entered into by the town, and that is entering into it as a crime scene. And I think that we could stop this project if we considered it a crime scene. And I'd like to point out that legal work is very expensive, especially for an individual. But for a community with 23,000 people that are being taxed, to the extent that our attorneys' fees are over $300,000 per year now, I believe it's $305,000 a year, not including expenses. If we take into consideration our neighboring community, Woburn, and look at their legal expenses, I think that both communities could team up and approach this using an attack mode of a crime scene investigation to stop the Trans Rail project. As I was listening to Mr. Bentl tonight speak about meeting with Congressman Moulton, I was happy to see him making the effort to do that, but I was disappointed at the response, hearing that Moulton's office wants us to keep him up to date on what's going on. I think it should be the other way around. I think that office should be aggressively pursuing this and keeping us up to date as to what's going on. And, you know, I firmly believe that if the polluters of this site have contributed to causing cancer, I think it can be approached from the perspective of a manslaughter claim, or multiple manslaughter claims, due to the cancer-causing chemical, NVMA. And so, I'm just wondering why you, Judy, as the chairman, it's my understanding that the chairman actually sets the agenda, why you've never set an agenda to approach this from a crime scene investigation to stop the Trans Rail project?
You know, I'm going to defer to the manager to, he has indicated he wants to make a comment, but I'd certainly be happy to add some comments after giving him an opportunity to speak.
This issue is, Mr. McDonald, well-known... This issue, as Mr. McDonald well knows, has been going on for some time. The individuals who have expertise and who are attorneys, we have met with clearly on a number of occasions and, you know, it may sound good or catch the news to declare this a crime scene. That is really not a legally defensible or feasible approach to declare this a crime scene. So that is not something that we're looking to do.
And what makes you think, who gave you the advice or the counsel that it cannot be approached as a crime scene? Or is that just your opinion?
That's an opinion that's formed based upon many years of having head conversations with town council and quite frankly, not having a law degree. I don't know where your law degree is, Mr. McDonald, from, but I rely on the experts.
So, are you saying that there are actually correspondence from the legal team that actually state in writing to you that there is no defense based on, based on this contaminated site being a crime scene? Have you ever approached them and specifically put in writing a draft saying that, "We'd like to approach this as a crime scene, seeing as though many people in town have died of cancer"?
I'm going to interject, I'm going to interject and say to you that we, as a board and as a town, have looked to our Boston law firm as to how to approach this. We've had executive sessions, we've had public sessions, we've had public forums, we've had memos, we've had meetings, we've had board of selectmen meetings, I have put them on the agenda, and we have explored every option with our legal team. To use your exact phraseology, I haven't seen a correspondence that states it exactly in that manner, but I can tell you that everybody that sits up at this table has asked for a full court press and of this town to avail itself to every option to try and defend the town against the Olin site and New England transrail. It may not meet your expectations, it may not meet the expectations of others, but I can tell you that the town has availed itself to every option at this time.
It's my opinion that when somebody is working for you, when they're hired by you, you direct them as to what to do. You tell them that Wilmington is a community that has a high rate of cancer and you tell them to go attack this at this type of a level. If you want to stop, if you want to stop the transrail site, okay, you need to stop it this way, because obviously it hasn't been stopped any other way. And if a site gets developed and we need to go in there and do an investigation based on contamination evidence that I believe has contributed to deaths in town from cancer, because the cancer-causing compound, N D M A, was definitely found in our wealth fields, causing our wealth fields to be shut down. And to hear you say that we've explored every avenue when you've just kept saying that you've seen no correspondence from this. So I'm wondering if there's anybody up on that board who would have the courage to actually stand up and say, "I'll make the motion that we direct our law firm that's getting paid over three hundred thousand dollars a year in legal fees to go at this and attack it from a manslaughter investigation."
Your comments have been loaded. Anything else?
Yes. I mentioned in the last meeting that it's been recorded, actually before I go on to that, I asked the question and I didn't get an answer, if there's anybody up front who would have the courage to stand up and be willing to direct or make a motion that we direct our attorneys to attack this site from that perspective. So does that mean nobody is willing to step up and make that motion? Am I, am I hearing crickets up there?
Move on.
Okay. I'll take that as a no.
Madam Chair, can I just make a quick comment? Would that be all right?
Sure.
Whoever the next chairperson is, that chairperson, maybe we could meet in executive session. I don't think we, I'm no lawyer, I'm not about to put this community in peril. Maybe the next chairperson, when the time comes, we sit down, we meet with our town council and what's, we talk about executive session, that's what we talk about. But, you know, that would be a possibility to look at. That's the time and place when you want to talk legal strategies in executive session, not right out here and open. And that's just something that maybe the next chairperson could maybe team, consider at that, what you're saying, maybe at that time, you know? But I don't think we should be in the business of making commitments here.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment, you know, this suggestion, and it's interesting the way these things are presented with innuendo and suggestion that somehow the town is laying down on this. If, you know, town council, the folks that we hire as experts, if there was a belief that we could have a strong case in pursuing this as a crime scene, that would have been done ten years ago. The fact that that has not been brought forward is suggesting that the folks who do have law degrees and have expertise in environmental law have determined that that is not an appropriate strategy.
Mr. Hull?
You're done, move on from that, move on from that, you're done.
Judy, Chairman O'Connell, the last meeting I mentioned that there were thirty-three foreclosure notices that were out of Wilmington. I was just given some information from a neighboring community where their chief financial officer, the mayor, actually lowered taxes in their town, in Woburn. We haven't seen that in Wilmington. We see people getting foreclosure notices, we see people having to sell their houses, we see people being-
Kevin, what is your question? Do you have a question or comment?
My question is this, my question is this, Judy. You are the chairman of the board, you are also a real estate agent in town. Is it your strategy to see taxes go up and people happen to sell their houses so you can make a real estate commission on them having to sell their houses? Is that your strategy?
First of all, in terms of me in this role as a member of the Board of Selectmen, since I've been on this board, we have voted to do the maximum tax shift as a board, which is the 1.75 percent. That's the role of this board and we have taken that role, which is to shift the maximum burden onto the commercial side. In terms of you stepping out of bounds, in my opinion, to bring my occupation into my public service, I think is an inappropriate question. I have never brought my real estate profession into this room and I don't intend to for as long as I'm here, which will be until the next meeting and until April twenty-second. Anyone that knows me personally or professionally knows my character and my integrity and knows that whether it's relative to the Olin site and my actions as a citizen and as a caring resident that would not want to do any harm to anyone relative to that, of course, if there was anything that we could do with that, we'd be doing it. Relative to taxes, don't ever, sir, ever indicate in a public forum that I would ever do anything detrimental to residents such that they would lose their home. So the answer is no, that is not my strategy and you have personally offended me with that question. So move on from there.
Sometimes these things offend people and you've just got to have a little bit thicker skin to be able to answer the question.
Move on from the question.
As the chairman of the board, I have never seen you bring forth anything as an agenda item to streamline government, to lower taxes. You speak about shifting the tax burden, but yet the residents never feel that. We see large residential apartment buildings get built, we see commercial and industrial buildings go up and increase the tax revenue, but we don't see tax relief.
I understand that you are campaigning and you want to make this your microphone platform to be able to pontificate, that you're the almighty person with all the knowledge about heart around the town. What I can say to you is do your best outside of Room Nine to campaign for yourself and someday you might find yourself sitting here, but this is not the forum to be doing that.
Well, I can tell you one thing, if I'm sitting there, I'm going to be fighting for the taxpayers and I haven't seen you do that.
That's your opinion.
And I haven't seen my taxes remotely go down.
That's your opinion.
When I see-
Move on, move on from that.
Thirty-three people get foreclosure.
You want to personally attack me and give your opinions of me as a selectman, that's fine. I'd be happy to have that discussion with you outside of this room.
Yeah, well, you know.
Move on.
I'd like to, I'd like to actually find out if these meetings, these executive session meetings that you talked about with strategy can be obtained by anyone in the community that, say, lost somebody due to cancer, can be brought to them in a public record form?
Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Executive session minutes are released when they are available to be released. If there's an ongoing situation and it could be detrimental to the town, nothing says that executive session meetings need to be released prematurely if it's detrimental to the town. I certainly can't give you chapter and verse of the Massachusetts law books, but I will tell you that you will not see executive session minutes be released prematurely if it would be detrimental to a litigation case.
Absolutely, and I think that's probably the right move. It's just, I just wanted to ask the question in case somebody's watching at home who has suffered a loss due to a loved one that died of cancer.
What I want to just step in there and say is that what you're getting at in your innuendo, once again, is to think that anyone up here doesn't have a beating heart, that doesn't feel for anyone that's lost someone from cancer, and that simply is a bullfate, face untrue statement. So I resent that implication.
I was asking that, I never said it.
No, but you didn't have to. So move on from that, move on from that.
So you were on the Yentile Farm Committee and the last, last meeting I brought up the fact that fourteen thousand cubic yards of farm land was given away for free.
Yes, and I answered your question, move on from that.
It was given away for free.
Yes.
I figure it totaled a couple hundred thousand dollars, okay? So my point is this, you mentioned that the Yentile Farm came in under budget, so, which means that it would have been over budgeted. So the difference in that between the budget, between the budgeted amount-
Not going to have a debatable conversation with you about this.
Not a debate. It's just a simple, it's a simple statement that we had a budget amount for the Yentile Farm. If we have an expenditure for the Yentile Farm, there's a difference in that amount. Can you tell us what the difference is in that amount?
Not at this time.
Okay, because I wanted to, if you can get us that information, my next question was, the difference in that amount, is that going to be given back to the taxpayers or is that going into free cash?
Madam Chair, you know, what's interesting is that we receive a criticism on the part of Mr. McDonald because he believes there's this conspiracy to over budget so that there's this massive amount of money going back into free cash, yet I suspect we would also be criticized by the same individual if budgets were prepared and the actual expenditure exceeded that number. So I quite frankly don't know how you win in a situation with, with this, with Mr. McDonald. So I guess we just have to take that as it is. The fact of the matter is that the budget for the Yentile project is approximately five hundred thousand dollars under budget, so we have not fully expended the four point eight million dollars that was appropriated. The funds that are remaining will go back to free cash. But that is, as Mr. McDonald has seemed to suggest in the past, that we're, we're doing this over budgeting scheme so that we can drive up free cash. I would just note that that is only one element and a small element of the rationale and the basis for generating free cash.
Well, my, my understanding, Mr. Hull, is free cash is generated because of over budgeting and, and in response to what your suggestion was, if something came in and we actually under budgeted it, there's always a line item, every single town meeting, for paying unpaid bills on the, on the warrant for town meeting. So that's how you'd accomplish that, Mr. Hull.
Okay.
And we have, what is it, eight, sixteen million, fifteen million?
No, no, move on, move on, please.
How much money do we have in free cash right now, Mr. Hull?
We've gone over it in previous meetings, move on.
Is that because he doesn't want to answer the question?
No, it's because I've asked him not to answer it. You've already been told that number, you know what that number is.
Yeah, it's, it's because of over budgeting and over taxing.
Move on, move on and bring your comments to a close.
My, my last comment is, is that I believe that the town is ruthlessly oppressing taxpayers with over budgeting and over taxation.
Okay, that's your opinion.
And I have seen none of you do anything about it.
Thank you.
When I see other communities do something and lower taxes, I would say-
Thank you for your comments, bring your comments to a close for the night.
There's a way to make it happen.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none, okay. Moving on to new business items, not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. I will start to my left with Selectman Shampoo.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to just stay only on the positive side here. Wanted to acknowledge and pay tribute to Chief Begonas of the Wilmington Police Department and all of his staff and so many chiefs and police officers who came from towns far and wide around the Commonwealth for the COPS for Kids with Cancer reflection. I guess that was that Friday afternoon? Forgive me, my days blend in, but it was at the end of last week. It was a remarkable showing of support and just a very impressive, not that I would be at all surprised by how impressive those, those gentlemen and ladies can be, but they, they came together and really paid tribute to, and, and raised awareness and funds for individuals that are struggling with cancer. So my, my commendation to them. Also wanted to acknowledge and congratulate to you, Mr. Kyra, on behalf of your organization, the Sons, Wilmington Sons of Italy. We, all of us at this table, were able to attend your celebration on Saturday evening, the fiftieth anniversary celebration of the Sons of Italy. So congratulations to that organization and many more happy and productive years and thanks again publicly for all the, what was the number, 1.6 million, is that the number? Just, just a remarkable amount of contributions that have been made historically through the years by the Sons of Italy to the town of Wilmington. So thank you very much, sir. That is all.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just quickly, we had a big snowstorm a couple Tuesdays ago and I called the town manager on a Wednesday, saw something very impressive. I do a little snowplowin'. I was out with my daughter, we drove by Mineke and we pulled in Dunkin' Donuts to get a cup of coffee and a donut. Well, we kind of really went to Cummins early, she said, "Dad, they got great hot dogs." But anyway, as we drove by, I noticed at Mineke, the flagpole fell down and it was facing the old bridge. And I saw that. So when my daughter went in there, I'm saying to myself, I said, "Well, we're going to have to probably give a call." Within moments later, it was very touching, my daughter comes out and I see two Cruisers with their lights on. I said to my daughter, "They're going to retrieve that flag." That flag was on the ground in the snow, it was a whiteout, there was fifty mile an hour winds and police officers got out of their car and they retrieved that flag. It was a very touching moment and I just, I mentioned that to the town manager the following day. So kudos goes out to the police department and I did mention it to the chief when I did see him. And you're right, that was a wonderful thing you said, Mr. Shampoo, what we attended the other day. That said something and that was really, really touching. Kevin, great job on the Suns, enjoyed it, food was fantastic, every entertainment was great, your brother always does a great job and it was really, really good. And I'm sorry, I ate all those biscotti's the following morning, I even ate, my wife says biscotti's, but, yeah. And in closing, let me just say this, relative to Olin, relative to anything, I think we have a great town council, they do a great job. I am no lawyer, as the chair said, none of us are, I have a lot of faith in our town council and they do a fantastic job and I feel very comfortable when they go to bat for us, I really do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving over to my right.
I just, I want to thank all of you for attending that evening. It was, it was quite special having everybody there. Jeff and Judy, I want to thank you for your kind remarks on behalf of the citizens of Wilmington to the Sons of Italy. I also too attended the COPS for Kids with Cancer and I'd like to commend the, the police department, Chief Begonas in particular, and it was amazing to see all those communities there in support of this worthwhile cause.
If I may, I just have three things. I just want to start by saying even this Irishman had a good time at your Sons of Italy event, so thank you for having me and congratulations to the Sons of Italy on your anniversary. I echo my colleague's comments, the COPS for Kid event was amazing, it was an awesome tribute and thanks to the Police and Fire Department for that and all the police departments that came out to support Wilmington. And it was a pleasure to meet Kelly's family and her and so I want to give a big shout out to Kelly Strong tonight. And lastly, if I may, through you, Madam Chair, request to the manager that perhaps at a future meeting, if not the next meeting, that perhaps we could get an update on the opiate task force, which I know you're working diligently on, so I appreciate that, if we could bring that up on a future agenda. Something that's obviously very important to, not only to the members of this board, but to our entire community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just had a few comments as the chair as well. I wanted to obviously give you all ample opportunity. Just as chairman of the board, I wanted to extend my sincere well wishes, and I know I'm sure I can extend it on behalf of all of you, to our interim superintendent, Joanne Benton, who has been written in the media, has tendered her resignation for the end of the month. I have had the pleasure of working with Joanne personally as an assistant superintendent and as superintendent and then obviously as a member of this board. working with the school department. So I just wanted to extend sincere best wishes to Joanne and her health. And certainly as a board, I'm hopeful that we can work with our school committee as they seek out to find an interim solution as well as a long-term solution for this particular role. And I have every confidence that they will get through that as best as possible and as expeditiously as possible. Regarding another event that we, many of us attended, we, many of us attended the 10-year anniversary of the passing of Private First Class John F. Landry Jr. I will tell you that that was a very moving event to attend. It was on March 17th, and I just wanted to commend Lou and Joe Downs and the Police and Fire all came in uniform. I know Jeff and Dee were there, as well as many of us, and it was a very moving tribute to the family, and you could see the gratitude that their parents and family felt for Wilmington coming together as a community. They also had the state police there as well, and it was just quite an event to see under such unfortunate circumstances, but it's an example of Wilmington coming together. And I know many of you talked about the COPS for Kids with Cancer. I just get emotional at a lot of these events, but, you know, to see the support for Kelly and the Gonzalez family was very overwhelming. I don't think many people had a dry eye around me when she had come in, and the smile on her face could light up any room, and just the courage and bravery that she has going through this very difficult time. And I can't say enough about the COPS for Kids and what they do. I couldn't believe that they donate $5,000 to six families a month for $30,000 a month, plus $10,000 increments to local hospitals in the area. And everyone that works on that, within that organization, does so at no cost, no charge, and all of the money predominantly goes towards the donations. So I can't say enough about that. I just want to commend Wilmington Police and Fire for coming together. Quite a tribute between those two community events. And lastly, the 50th anniversary for the Wilmington Sons of Italy. I certainly don't want to diminish my comments on that. It was great for us to all get together. We all sat together as a happy family at one table, and I thought that was great. And, you know, as it's been stated, $1.6 million worth of donations to Wilmington and beyond, the list of what the Wilmington Sons of Italy has accomplished year over year, decade after decade. It's one of the finest organizations, in my opinion, in this town's history. And certainly every individual that's part of that organization should be very proud. Kevin, you're a distinguished member. Selectman McCoy has been a 25-plus year member, so we've had representation within that organization, even on this board. You know, certainly every member of that organization deserves to receive credit, but I was particularly pleased to see how well-recognized Mrs. Laura Kyra was that evening. She's one of the three founders, and fortunately, a living founder. And I have to say, just in general, not only being a magnificent human being, just how stunning she looked that night, and was like the belle of the ball. So it was really nice to have her get some extra recognition that was so well-deserved. So in closing, I just wanted to say that I'm on the verge of my last meeting, and with that, let's move right along to important dates, and that's an important date for me, which is April 10.
Okay. March 29th is the next brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 1st, following brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Also on April 1st is Araby's Clinic, Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00. April 3rd is the last date of registered vote at the annual town elections and town meeting. Town clerk's office will be open from 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM. April 3rd through the 7th is curbside collection of yard waste. April 5th is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. April 8th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. April 10th is the next selectmen's meeting here at 7 o'clock. Additional brush drop-off dates on the 12th, from 8:00 to 2:00. The 15th, from 9:00 to 4:00, again at the Old Main Street location. April 15th is the Easter egg hunt, Town Common, 2:00 PM. April 28th, April 18th through the 22nd is the curbside collection of yard waste. Another brush drop-off date on the 19th of April, from 8:00 to 2:00, and again on the 22nd, from 9:00 to 4:00. Town elections, the 22nd of April, polls open at 8:00 AM and remain open till 8:00 PM. April 23rd is the Where One Wilmington Run for Wilmington/Kim Forte Walk. April 24th is another selectmen's meeting here at 7:00 PM. Brush drop-off, I'm sorry, yeah, brush drop-off again on the 22nd, from 8:00 to 2:00, and then again from 9:00 to 4:00. The annual town meeting is the 29th. High school auditorium starts at 10:30 AM, and then on the 29th is the drug take-back program. Public safety building, people may drop off medications from 10:00 to 2:00. Sorry? Yes, the Little League Parade is also coming up on the 15th.
And that's also the Easter egg hunt that was mentioned as well. Okay, so at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yes. Okay, good night. Thank you.